It's packed today.
I can go sign up right now.
Uh huh.
I can go sign up.
Why?
You just asked me what to do.
Ask me what to do.
I said that nothing matters.
I did that.
I haven't signed yet. I haven't seen it on our way to many words. My [inaudible 00:00:00]. I haven't signed it for you. Yes, you have. If you have, I'll give you. You're letting go slow. I'm gonna have to sell it. See where he is.
So we know.
Thank you, Steve.
It won't last long now.
You're signing.
And Paul's work done.
I don't think I can finish. It's been on my [inaudible 00:00:19]. See, that one doesn't. What's that? Yeah, I think yes.
But I believe this is required by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time of stuff going over on this year, I begin to mind that person that will make the forum. It's time to move into public comment Serena Jackson.
Hello, my name is Serena Jackson. I am the area superintendent for Harmony Public Schools, North Texas, Elwood Tree District, and a citizen of Godly. I am here to speak on behalf of Officer Scott Morgan. I was shocked to see who's being confirmed by the city council after having been employed by the city of Godly for four and a half years. This may be just a formality caused from the previous administration. Either way, I would like to share how blessed we are to have him on the Godly Police Force. I met Officer Morgan in 2012 as a first-year principal. I had just opened our elementary campus in Ulas, and we were experiencing many traffic concerns due to dismissal, no school zone installation, and we wanted to adopt a strong school safety measures, all while building a strong relationship with the Ulas Police Department. We were in need of help with traffic, and Officer Morgan came to the rescue. We were able to dismiss over 1,000 students from both the elementary and secondary campuses within a shared parking lot in 30 minutes with his assistance. He saw the need for the school zone and helped us with that as well. While we had safety measures in place, we worked closely with Officer Morgan to adopt strong safety practices at our campuses. To this day, many of these safety measures have been adopted system-wide and are utilized by all 64 Harmony campuses across the state of Texas. My family and I moved to Godly in 2009 when I found out Officer Morgan was employed as an officer in the city of Godly. I was comforted in the fact that I knew my family and the citizens of Godly were safe under his watch. Since moving here, we have witnessed him interacting with the children of our small town and building relationships with their parents. He truly cares for Godly and its citizens. All of this being said, I surely hope this council sees the necessity in confirming his, uh, yeah, sorry, his continued employment as an officer. He is an asset that Godly cannot afford to lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ashley, catch your side. Ashley, catch your side.
Hello, council. Hello, council. Hello, Godly neighbors. Hello to the good and the unafraid. I am here today to speak on behalf of our Godly Police Department. Evil is powerless if the good are unafraid. I'm sorry, can you guys please stop whatever you're doing? Please listen to me.
Thank you. On taking what you're saying. I have a line.
I'll give you a call. We are good and we are unafraid to fight for what is right. We are good and we are unafraid to speak up and have the voice. We are good and unafraid because of the five police officers who serve our community. Today, we are good and we are unafraid. We want to sit around and talk about qualified people? Well, you're looking at them. Chief Cantrell, 10 years with the Godly Police Department, two associate's degrees, one bachelor's in arts of science and criminal justice, Officer of the Year 2016. The list goes on. Certified code enforcing masterpiece officer, sexual assault, family violence, death, property criminal investigator, plans to get his masters in the criminal justice in Arlington State, taser T. Cole instructor as well. Sergeant Arvidna, 12 years in law enforcement, six with the Godly Police, six in county correctional, five as firefighter, has math tech, Rookie of the Year 2018, Officer of the Year 2019, only person to catch the infamous ATM thief that wounded the FBI and three jurisdictions in Oklahoma, Texas, and Florida. Leads in arrests, traffic stops, citations, and warnings. Again, certifications, training as a detective, sexual assault, violence, sexual offender investigator, internal affairs, intermediate peace officer, the list goes on. The theme of the week has been qualified versus unqualified and competitive pay. Before paying side deals and hiring our buddies to look at the, to, we need to stop and look at the pay of their department. Our police department have families, friends, loved ones, and children who they just defy every ship, not knowing if they are safe or if they will ever return. All for $40,000 a year? Forty? Really? And you think you have luck for the city? Think again. So before moving forward with party committees and vending machines, these issues need to be in the forefront of the agenda items. Council should not have a say on police confirmation. The law is from the 70s, and very few cities continue to adopt this process. We've already seen the catastrophic effects of council acting as HR and making unfair and biased decisions in a hiring process. The confirmation needs to be left to the hands of those in charge of the absolute department. The ones wearing the badge, the ones who are hired based on their own livelihoods at stake, not you. Scott Yarborough talks about Godly being the laughing stock all the way up to New York. Don't confirm these officers and find out. Without confirmation of our police officer member, members, irreparable events could follow suit, causing Johnson County to take over, calls and emergency responses that could take up to 45 minutes. Lawlessness. Will we be safe? I don't know. We will not falter. We will not waver. We will stand strong with our Godly Police Department. If they walk, we walk. We stand strong with our force. As one, we, the people, are good and unafraid. We are one Godly. A house divided against itself cannot stand. Abraham Lincoln. So today, I stand before you, good and unafraid, asking for peace, asking for unity, demanding the confirmation of these officers. And I would like to thank Chief Cantrell, Sergeant Arvidna, Officer Morgan, Officer Rizzo, Officer Templar, Officer Lot, Officer Giles, and newly hired Officer Morgan. We are one Godly. Today, we are unafraid.
Rogan Soheli?
Roger Soheli.
Roger Soheli.
Let me get over your hand shake. Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens and residents of Godly. That is a tough act to follow. I tell you right now. A little bit about me. I'm a retired sergeant from the Godly Police Department. I started here in 1998. Worked under four different chiefs. Worked here, I worked on the border as an investigator, and a few other things. Worked with DDA, uh, four years of court beating, worked every division up there. The best job I ever had was here with the Godly Police Department. All four times, they took time to be back. I'd be back now if I'd be the second, my knee and dirt. Everything she said is just true. You have no idea how many calls I made out in the county, because the county never had anybody available. They had an east side, they had a west side. The west side always stayed on the east side, and it should call on 35. So I'm in total agreement with you. If you think the county's gonna put a deputy in this town 24/7, they're not gonna do that. I can tell you right now. The best interest, the best thoughts. The reason I'm here is I know that during New York, Sergeant Arvidna, uh, I was one of the ones who did the background, they hired. He's been an excellent officer. I know almost everybody in the town, every business. And got me talking, they, they put a loving staff on that thing. And you gotta keep him. The other three, I don't know. Chief Cantrell. I was here when they hired. I have worked with him, I've worked beside him, I've watched him work. I have great deal of respect for him for three reasons. One, the respect he has for everybody. Two, to be a good supervisor, to be a good leader, you have to listen till you hear both sides and not jump to conclusions. That's the most important thing, and he has those qualities. Very few people, I, I go back to work for him, I'm heartbroken, because I know if I had a problem, I could go to him. We'd talk about it. It would get resolved. I know he will do that for his troops. I know he has a love for this city. I know, and I have watched him sit down with people and talk with them, get their problems worked out. Because he cares, deep in his heart, he really cares about people. Out of towners, same thing. He gives everyone the equal amount of consideration and earns their trust. I could go on for a long time, but like I said, after her deal, oh, she's right on the money. You know, if not, pass my deal completely out. But like I said, I'm proud of members of this department. And they've done a good job living up to the legacy of the Godly Police Department. There's been a lot of good and bad going on around here, but one thing about them, they're all leaders within themselves, and they've got a good leader to lead them. And the best thing that y'all could do would be to make sure y'all kept them. Because I know a lot of other towns have gotten rid of their departments and gone to their sheriff's office. Within a year, they're hiring the department back. It never fails, because say the county with some big major deal down on 35 South. Well, everybody's going down that way, even the one assigned to the city of Godly. They have no choice. County comes first, and the city, even though you have contracts. You know, county's got good people, but you gotta go where the citizens demand you to go. And pardon's hold up basically when I was here last. I'm glad to see that too, especially with what's going on today. Anyway, I appreciate it, and I appreciate y'all having faith in these men and women here.
Thank you. Dwayne Ferguson?
Mayor Proton, city council members, fellow Wildcats, and citizens of Godly. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of Officer Morgan. Quick, quickly to tell you, I am, I moved to Godly in 98. The population is under 614, or maybe 641. I'm not sure if that's just like your [inaudible 00:00:58]. But either way, my point is it's a small town, and it's still a small town, albeit we're grown. We continue to attract people here because of our small town values. Having officers who really truly care about doing what's on the badge, protecting, serving the citizens of this town is something that does mean a lot to me. Um, I first met Officer Morgan along with him out of the house about four years ago. And I'm embarrassed to say I was both dismissive and rude. He wasn't. He stayed professional. So much so that, uh, I was compelled to apologize. My, excuse me, my acting myself. And I completely expected him to tell me to take a [inaudible 00:01:02]. I was, I wasn't very nervous. And, uh, so I'm probably gonna be down the next time I see him, maybe his rings, and I apologize. And he was very receptive, he didn't hold me in grudges, and he continued to do his job professionally. Had several encounters with him since then. And to simply put, and to make this the shortest speech of the night, if I were to put my name on somebody's, if I were to pick an officer to protect my family, to the people I work in this town, it would be somebody just like that.
Clayton Smith?
My name is Clayton Smith. I've served up here on council for a good many years. Close it, where you're at, and I'm trying to drink out of fire hydrant, I've killed it. So I appreciate it. I appreciate y'all taking this on, it doesn't pay very well. But I, I wanted to come tonight and, and I'm a little confused with the agenda as far as you throwing your hat in the ring for city administrator. I'll start there. Uh, I'm not for that, and I'll tell you why. You see, I feel like if somebody's gonna do that, they have to represent the whole, the whole town, the whole, every entity of, of the city. And I don't, uh, I feel like, to me, you've shown your colors. And I'm not here to just go back, actually, I'm, I'm answering your request for feedback about whether I'm in favor, I'm in favor of it or not, and I'm not. But as far as representing the city, uh, totally with every fire department, and the public works, and the police, and, and, uh, our little street dance episode is where I feel like you showed your colors with the police department. And so, I'm just making a formal that that's my vote. Y'all will do what you're gonna do. Uh, and, and saying that, I feel like that maybe some of this confirmation, I don't understand the confirmation part either. Weren't they sworn in when they came in, I mean, as police officers? I don't know whether, maybe reconfirm, maybe y'all can clear that up for me. But I hope that some of this personal stuff doesn't drift over into that tonight. And we keep the police department that we have, I think they're doing a great job. I know the city can't pay what other cities can't, and I know so it's a sacrifice for them as well to be here. So, I thank all that taken into consideration, they're doing, and I thank y'all. So, uh, maybe you can explain that I didn't get the town hall thing, and it looked like y'all were gonna vote on, his position tonight with that, so, uh, I wasn't gonna say anything until I saw it, I, I can't make sense of it. Maybe you can explain that, can y'all talk back to me, or? Or, if you didn't do it, man?
I don't think so, I don't think.
You're in public comment, it's your time to speak to the council. We can answer with factual answers, if you ask for it, there is a ordinance that applies, um, state law, something like that. So, just to clear the air, the confirmations, we're not trying to get rid of the police department. We're not trying to disband the police department. So when the pastor wasn't done correctly, um, they were not sworn in, they did not have anything in their files. They were never commissioned, they were never bonded. So, it was not done by ordinance, you know, it was from any of these, that's our ordinances, that was supposed to be done. So that's what we're trying to fix here.
Now, I was here when we put the police department in place, so maybe, maybe I'll stand up as I can to build it, but, as far as the confirmation for that, but I don't know how to ask a question as far as making sense of the two line items in the agenda tonight for, vote on a town hall, and then y'all will decide then on the twelfth? And that's a question, I mean, yes or no?
So if that is a discussion action item, if that's what the council decides to do, then we'll have a town hall on the twelfth.
But if they turn that down, then, then y'all vote tonight on placement of a city administrator?
That's also a discussion action item.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Dwayne. Stephanie Head? Can't really read the last name, so. Oh, Jesse. Okay, Amanda Browner?
Hey, this is the city council, and I'm the native owner, and I'm here to speak like others on behalf of Officer Scott Morgan, um, for the confirmation. And we also moved to Godly about four years ago, at the time of Godly Heights, which was when we met Officer Morgan. Uh, I will say that coming from a town, it's a very listen, into a fact, experience of the police department that actually cares for, um, the citizens, but, as a parent, it's a good relationship with their children, uh, and with their children. We can't be blessed enough to have more officers, um, in this town, such as Officer Morgan. Not as eloquently spoken as some of the others above, but I just wanna make sure that we were here to show our support, um, and there's something that the police department is definitely something that, uh, Godly's blessed to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, you'll have to wait until your presentation is, are you gonna speak now? I mean, you have a presentation or a public comment, right?
So we have to do both?
We can wait.
Chris Porter?
Thank you, Councilor. All of you know me. I'm already an attorney, licensed in California, licensed in Texas. I do more than it's family law. For you that don't know me, I have presented previously to this council, before you got elected, disclosures on liability of your position. I appreciate all your positions, taking it is nobody else's, it's a thankless position, it's not paid. The only person that I know here today that has full disclosure, transparency, is Miss Rodriguez. I am here because of a post that I've read and streamed by a ton of citizens of Godly as to Michael, how can I post your application for administrator of this city? Unfortunately, you're not qualified for many reasons, legally and educationally. And I like you, I spoke into you, I have nothing personal. But what everybody seems to forget, and you ran on, and you ran on, is qualifications. My understanding is there's been over a hundred applications for the city administrator. What makes Michael qualified? You in your run for a fire department? I'm sorry, that's not anything that is business, doesn't know how to run a checkbook for a city, look for the planning, all the things that go on? I understand that he's been doing it part-time or intern for the last couple of months, because this city was screwed by the prior agencies, prior council. You guys have got left bird shit, okay? Understandably. But now the burden is on you to fix it, and the citizens are demanding. You, unfortunately, Michael, you don't have a job anymore, and so you're trying to fill in a position that you're not qualified for. I am aware of more people that are qualified. Ms. Myers is here, has degrees in business administration, knows this stuff. She is more qualified than you are, and yet, my understanding is that you believe you're the most qualified, and you're not. And you, are also, my understanding, are the holder of all the resumes and applications that have came in. I'm not sure if the other council have received it, whether or not they've even voted on it, looked at it, considered it, had open interviews for any of the top five applicants. That is a concern. The other reason why you're not qualified is the settlement with Godly, which I have copies of, and it's fully done, with Mr. Amatoya, Councilor. I've read the demand letter, I know what it reads, I have the settlement, I've outlined it. You're named in the original, you have a monetary interest in it because the city signed a settlement agreement because you provided a copy, a bag of dicks. Understand, had it been litigated, it would have been thrown out easily, okay? Based on Amatoya's reputation, which I've already researched, from Alvarado to all, all the others. I won't get into the police department, because I've already researched most of them, and I've got information. You wanna do this, then you're gonna have problems when Jan Thompson's lawsuit, which has already been filed, comes down. I will tell you that you have liability. As you sit there, I'm not making a threat, but the citizens are paying for your fifty thousand dollars that you paid out because of it. And it's black and white. I will tell the citizens here that in a settlement agreement in Texas, there's no liability ever admitted. Mr. Amatoya can go find work else for it, because, ah, we don't wanna do anything with his teacup. Why pay him the fifty thousand dollars if he did nothing wrong? You cannot sit here and be administrator knowing that you caused this city council and the citizens fifty thousand dollars from a budget. Was it provided to the insurance company? Of course not. The insurance rates would go up, you wouldn't be able to hold office, they wouldn't defend you. There are issues. Yes, I'm gonna determine. I understand all this, and I explained this all to you once before, that you have liability issues. Back there, especially in going, told you, don't settle. Did you listen? Don't play any father routine as to anything that was signed. This was signed in July of this year by Mr. Cornelson, okay? Had to be consented by you. It doesn't matter what basically signed or negotiated. You have the power, if you don't know your own statutes for this city, then get off the board. Because I've already told you once, not twice, what the ordinances read. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Government City Council is here as executive session at twenty-one twenty-one, you're reconvened to open session at twenty-one twenty-seven. I don't have discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Jerry Arvidna as a Godly police officer.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm Jerry Arvidna as a Godly official.
I'll second that. Yeah, a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have, uh, knowledge that Chief Cantrell is aware of, of communications between Sergeant Arvidna and previous city council members. So, I'm gonna abstain from this vote. It's already clear.
No, I'm not, what if we can start by, um, what is it?
Uh, because of communications between Sergeant Arvidna and previous city council members.
Scott? Any other discussion? Further discussion? Steve?
Yes.
I want to speak.
Yes. Motion carries to extensions, two for. I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't, discussion and possible action. Godly question to Matthew Cantrell.
I make a motion to accept Matthew Cantrell, Godly's partnership.
Before you do that, I'm gonna object to this one on basis of, uh, kind of listed before, it was already discussed.
Yeah, a motion and I'll second it, further discussion?
Okay, I'm just, I'm gonna make an argument, and you guys can decide what you think about it. Thirty-six oh-three, our Godly ordinance says, the city marshal and other members of the police department shall be appointed by the mayor. By the advice and consent of the city council, shall serve at the pleasure of the city council. As we all know, um, previous law firm, Wyatt Hamilton and Ben, they were very adamant about the former mayor being the quote-unquote CEO of the city. The king, and whatever he wanted to do, he could do. And so, he naturally followed their advice, and I think that's how he hired Chief Cantrell. Is it true, Roger and Michael, that there was advice and consent of the city council with Chief Cantrell or not?
I agree.
We go basically just forward that you was on chief.
Not that, or for that, but it was, might as well have that, or, you still have the, bring it, no, gonna happen.
And let me also preface this. When I get up in the morning, about two minutes after I get up, I've already made my first mistake, and it goes downhill. So, the, the point of this is just to clean up what is the cleanup that we see. So, here's mine. And, confirm or not, we, we clean this up by allowing the chief, or, the chief to return to a interim chief. And then we do the, um, search for a permanent chief again, and you could obviously reach, you mentioned your resume. And we do it the right way, which should have been done personally. No one else, as far as I know, was considered for the chief position. And so that just kind of cleans up the whole, uh, the process that I object to, and it's only the process. It has nothing to do with you, it has nothing to do with anything other than the process. And I've been a part of the procedure gap for most part. So, I don't think that this, the way this is worded, it says discussion impossible action on the confirmation of Godly police chief Matthew Cantrell. If we didn't confirm it, he's not fired. Why would he be fired? For chief, there's, there's officer, he would stay at the same page. You didn't get a raise, did you, guy? You didn't get a raise? Well, I wouldn't want to get a raise. So, you meet the same, he's interim chief, go through the process again, and do it the right way. That's an argument.
And it's my opinion that, I understand what you're saying, that he should not suffer the sins of the father.
Father, I get you, I understand that, and that is a unfortunate thing about him.
It is, so he should not be punished for something you're saying someone else did. We have to be able to divide.
We have to be able to divide that in order for us to move forward. There has to be healing, and we have to place responsibility on those that did not do the procedure correctly, not the people that were the aftermath.
True, but, um, other people see it differently. And I think part of healing on both sides is to negotiate and offer solutions. It's not the best. It's not my very joy, but I'm very, uh, so.
So, and so what you're asking is because of someone else did something incorrect?
Well, he broke the law.
Okay. So then that needs to be left again separately for the law to handle? Why should he be demoted and taken out of the position? He's been here ten years. Why on back, on, what you're saying, on that count? Why should he be demoted because of a mistake that someone else did?
So the procedure is done directly, and any kind of, uh, objection on that basis is wrong.
Well, then again, the blame needs to go to the person that did the wrong procedure.
The blame goes, I totally blame for that.
Yeah, so I don't think that whether it's Mr. Cantrell or there's another officer, they should not again suffer the same with the father. So, I understand what you're saying, perceptions. So when you're talking about someone's career, you're talking about demoting, you're talking about taking someone out of a position that they did in for that specific reason, to me, it's not justified. Because again, that should be again on the person or people that did that to him, not to him.
I understand that. I disagree. I think that we should clean it up. And it doesn't presuppose that he won't get the job.
And it can be cleaned up by this council confirming and saying that you're and that to me, it's still
Except for the fact that no one else has, except for the fact that no one else has been considered. And that's one of the problems that we're facing. In another area right now, is people think that no one else has been considered for the city administrative position. And so people are upset about that. So let's be consistent with stuff.
Mr. Cantrell, how long have you been chief?
Um, almost six months.
Six months. Has any time during that six months when this happened, was it brought to your attention that this was done incorrectly? By staff or by citizens?
I did it when they were in executive session out here two different times, on my service. I did it right out there in executive.
So the inner city attorney, this is the mayor, has told me that the mayor has the right to appoint a full-time position. I, I even asked this inner city attorney, who called Cor, if that is true, before I looked at the spot. She told me yes.
Counsel, I've heard my question to you. Is it legal for the city, uh, city manager to the administrator to appoint that police chief without the council's full approval? And then he is going to be confirmed by a council?
Yeah, so your ordinance requires consent by the council.
Consent by a council?
And I don't, I don't know, previous conversations, um, yes, the mayor needs to appoint, or in this case, you know, Mariposa, whoever it is. Um, I guess he's already been appointed by the mayor that there's been no consent by the council. On the record, right? Doesn't matter here, it's been, uh, no one's ever consented.
Is that the case? Mariposa?
Yes, it's never officially been entered in any way. So you have a
Official, officially entered in this, is appointed.
So if, if you're asking, does the council need to do something, I'd say yes.
So are you saying that we need to confirm him, or we need to, um, accept the chief? What was procedures required?
Yeah, um, I mean, I understand what uh, councilman Yarver was saying about the language of your general items. I think that, given the passage of time, you, you have an appointment. Your confirmation would be consent. If that's what the council chooses to use.
Mr. Cantrell, I already made a motion. I'm sorry, I'm going to second it.
I have a few questions I'd like to have at Executive Session asked. That's okay, everyone.
Give me, what is the, what is the exception?
Uh, personal matters, I was saying before.
On the same item?
Yes.
On the same, uh?
I mean, it's up to you if you want to call it again.
So for under sixty-eight percent of Texas, open the meetings, Act Chapter five-five-one, Texas Department of Defense, Section five-five-one, oh, seven, four, Gaby City. This Gaby City Council will convene the executive session at twenty-one forty.
What are we doing with the votes on this one?
Cantrell, you, I just need to ask.
Yeah, or do y'all, do y'all want to vote to suspend the motion?
I make a motion to suspend the motion.
Sorry.
Got a motion in the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
All right. I motion pass you to adjourn this, suspend.
So
I mean, it's Executive Session, Section five-five-one, oh, seven, four, twenty-one forty-one, crack and leave.
But there's four ten, I think you still need to ask if you want to do.
I have a motion for that, he's suspended in the second. In the second, Roger. I have a motion on the floor to approve the confirmation about the chief Matthew Cantrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Steve?
Aye.
All right. Aye.
All right, you can turn your hand. Here you go.
I make discussion and possible action on holding an informal town hall meeting, and I am a citizenary, and we voice their opinion on the hiring of Michael Paton Bruce as permanent city administrator to the city of Gaby. The town hall is to be held at the City Hall on Tuesdays, February twelve, twenty-two thirty. Meeting will continue until all citizens and residents who desire to have their voices heard have done so for twenty-two hundred, whichever comes first. At the conclusion of the meeting, the city council will retire to Executive Session to make a final decision.
All right, so this was my, um, what my vision here is, is for people, county, city. There's obviously a, uh, rift in regard to hiring Michael Paton Bruce, city administrator. And so the idea here is for those who wish to have their voices heard, for them to come and have and ask questions. Um, there's a lot of questions as to, you know, what have you done with the the other resumes? How many others have you considered, et cetera, et cetera? All of those things, I think, deserve an answer. And ought to be heard. They ought to have questions, and this is one where it's not just a five-minute session. This is where people can come in, and we will be on the hot seat to answer those questions. As, and to make people feel as comfortable as they're going to feel. You know, people are not going to be happy either way it goes. So that's my idea. Um, I don't know about the whole final decision at the end of the which I'm sure, there are less. But that's the idea that I have, that's that I hope my colleagues may approve tonight. Again, it's all in fact, so you got any questions for this people? You got a question for me, Roger, Michael, whatever? I'm going to have the opportunity to ask that direct question, to get a direct answer. It's very cheap. Within legal
I, well, I don't have a problem having a meeting over in a municipal town hall or not.
I would like to make a motion here. I'd like to make a motion to remove out of six-eight and sixteen on the agenda and deal with this on the same basis as we would deal with any other employee or applicant. The call set should not be singled out, and be treated any differently than removing other applicants. And all of them should be set to the same standard, the same qualification, the same everything. Doing it this way, we are giving more attention to one resident, one, um, specific candidate, that I do not believe that that should be segregated from the other applications, that if we're going to renew them, they should all be renewed in the same aspect. So my motion is to remove six-eight and sixteen.
You have to postpone it to a further debate or indefinitely. And if we can only do more, I should have a discussing. You want to do that, I, see you whenever you get there, I'll have you know.
Okay, so you're saying, no, I have to just postpone indefinitely? Can't?
You can postpone indefinitely, please, if you want to get your backup. You can postpone it for eight.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone six-eight and eleven.
I have a motion to, uh, second. No second, motion asked for, like, a second.
Just myself, I just didn't take, get this over with, and I just, I don't know, sixteen, and, and, or, or, et cetera.
No.
Or not. We've been through this for this will be, not even, we do the city have a straight?
This is not, uh, the regular applicant. This applicant is, um, different. That's why he is resuming and would be given with this pass differently. Um, I think that it's a hot point for the city and for the citizens of the city. And they deserve to hear why this is being done. I mean, I think it's, uh, I didn't, I did, I, I delivered a voice this entire weekend looking at anything on social media. And I'm going to refuse to do that going forward. So don't expect to hear anything from me on Facebook about this, or about much of anything else, to be frank. Um, but this is, we knew this was going to happen, we knew, okay, I know there's a poll to do that. People are calling, people are texting, they're reading it. So, uh, this is not the regular applicant. It's not the guy that's never been here before. Uh, the guy from Utah, the guy from Mexico, or the guy from Jaffa. And those aren't real people, they're just examples. It's, it's Michael Paton's, and that means there's it's, it's, it just is how it is. It's a hot point, and people who object, and the people who support should have the opportunity to have them say and, uh, to, to give the input to the City Council before the decisions are made. In my view. You can vote again.
Let's do this next Tuesday, make a motion to do six-eight next Tuesday. I agree.
Sir. I have a, your first calling is a little excessive. Part of your main motion.
To do this, to do it at the City Hall, maybe, or the Town Hall meeting.
So I have a motion to have a town hall informal meeting on September twelfth at eight-ten thirty. Is that your motion?
Yep.
So one second.
Scott here.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Scott, get out there, make not just a second.
I do have, because the council doesn't even get a chance to, to have say or to know on this before now is possible, or is, uh, the citizens, government motion. Uh, do we not trust our council to make this decision?
I don't know, do you think the six-eight still up? Would you make the, this, would you make this long vote tonight?
So if we schedule a town hall meeting and then we get to sixteen, and hypothetically it works in one way or the other, can we go back and cancel six-eight? If we don't even?
I, I don't think six-eight, sixteen is needed if you, if there's a discussion. Is that what you're asking?
I think what you're asking is you want to do sixteen tonight. So the line is higher than nine.
That's not, your assumptions.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, I'm looking at sixteen, it seems to be No, it's six-two, three. Except the point of that, sixteen. So that presupposes the entire county.
Now, look, if, if we go no, then that's not the case.
No, but what you're saying, okay, well, you
If, if, if you go no tonight, there's nothing to put you from the voting now on the next meeting.
You mean on sixteen?
On sixteen, that's sixteen. Or the next meeting. I mean, it's up to the council, I wouldn't advise to do that, everything I need, but it's within your powers, it's within your, so, uh, just keep your brush your problem, good point. This language here directed since we have a final sentence. So that last sentence, you can't make a final decision in Executive Session. So just keep going.
Well, we're making that motion. Did you already make, already made it? Well, it's a motion, maybe you're extended, and I'll take that part out.
So the motion is to have a town hall informal meeting on September twelfth, eighteen thirty.
All right, what do you? Then do we have to follow the item exactly as worded, if that's the motion?
No. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, this is a very wordy item, and I understand you to go ahead and make it, and
I should have been a lawyer. So I need to reset the original.
Is our motion up for right now?
Yes, the motion is to have a town hall informal meeting on Sep- September twelfth, eighteen thirty.
Okay, then we have a motion about sixteen, right? We're not addressing sixteen.
No, not today.
Is this September twelfth?
Yes, September twelfth.
Yeah, all you need to do is amend your motion to, uh, strike the last sentence. Okay.
Motion, go ahead, my motion.
You're making a motion to amend your motion.
The law committed to strike the last sentence at the conclusion of the meeting. City Council will retire the detective session.
So, the motion to amend the motion to strike the last sentence in per vouch, and I don't get a motion. Uh, the second.
No, second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, stop.
Aye.
No.
I will stay. Motion passes to amend the motion. So, I have a motion on the floor to have a town hall informal meeting on September twelfth at eighteen thirty, striking the last sentence in per vouch out of the age. Any further discussion?
Sure.
No further discussion, stop.
Aye.
No.
Uh. I'm gonna vote down. Motion failed.
Sure.
Okay, you might like to make another motion?
Another motion to what? Motion, same thing again, and fail?
Yes, uh, that's the process that we have to do.
Uh, no, if you guys don't want to do it, you don't want to do it. I made my case. Good afternoon.
Yeah, we're still on our pace. We need to take no action.
Your motion, we take a watch.
I have a motion, I'd rather to take no action on the second.
I'll second.
A motion in the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, stop.
No.
Yes, so it, yes, it's not a legal one.
Take your action.
Yes, motion passes three one. I don't, I, discussion of possible action on approving the proposal from Parker for electronic locks the access control system for the city of Galveston. I have a motion to postpone this September twelfth, eight seven seconds.
Do what?
To make a family emergency. I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, stop.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
I have a motion to pass it to you in this thing. Discussion of possible action on approving the this year twenty-two, twenty-three yard report is presented by America Clean and Hand PC at office fifteen, City Council.
Motion to approve out of six J as presented.
I have a motion in the second.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion?
There's another one coming out? Another audit closes the final audit.
This is the audit.
The audit.
This is.
Questions, that's meaning we had money going different places, but that, what we talked about last week. Addresses in this?
No, this would just be twenty-two. Okay, so, anything, discrepancy that we found this year? Um, because of first staff, which is a lot of, or a different authority.
I need to go. Are you, I need to go.
Figuring the folder is what they presented to me about a week ago. We finally have the final policy said, you don't want to over it, you can't. But they pretty much over it last week. Personally, I'm not interested in your credit much of already. I will say this has to be approved before budgeting. Any other discussion? No further discussion, stop.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I, motion passes to you in this. I'm okay, discussion of possible action on appointing members to the city of Galveston.
Chris White for me. I'll get your bird back and go on. Roger, I'm thinking you could holler at some of the ladies at the Lions Club. Need to holler at them since you think you're interested in their advice? Or is that a big thing for a while? Oh, so you already have a study?
No. So, Senator, our representative is left the room to fill the office, give his paper. Twenty-two, twenty-eight. We still have the forums, they just finished us.
You want to do the rest of the day out here or?
Well, send me the email.
I do not know much. City Council, they have address, address, but. Send a message. We find someone, anything, want to be on? Cause I don't have anybody to pick you.
That's for Roger now, before he listens to, hang on, he's gonna stop.
See you all in the July, this open.
Twenty-two, twenty-nine, this representative is.
For, for my picks is Aliza Duncan and Sky Hamilton. I do also have six other recommendations to email me would like, if needed, to be on the committee. So, I do have all of those here. Um, Marta Olivera, Carrie Lyscom, Vanessa Martinez, Carrie Bigelow, Tara Roan, Stephanie Hodges, Kara Bishop, Peggy Villa Gomez. All of these also would like either the one committee or the volunteers would to help.
My two dates are Marta and Stephanie.
Marta Olivera and Stephanie. Roger.
Hi, Margaret.
You want to?
I, was just, uh, I wish I'd done that before, but anybody who was interested, email me.
Well.
People that you've got will email me, that'll be probably.
I may not have you.
I'm gonna have to email, so again, if you're.
I'll go there.
No one does that.
It's probably, I was, when you mentioned the twelfth.
It's plus two, you're wrong.
If it's high, correct it.
How many more do we have? Did you say?
Many decide last meeting? I would say at least, we have five right now. Say at least five or seven. Okay, at least eight.
Eight, right there.
By state, we do Peggy Villa Gomez, Bishop, Kara Bishop, and Carrie Bigelow as well.
Did you give it over yet?
Peggy Villa Gomez, Kara Bishop, and Carrie Bigelow.
How many, how many does that leave in that group this?
Three. So, that puts eight people in the committee. I would say we can be much more than that. The others, all here.
Let's see, a voting today? You did it, probably got a big pile of numbers. Depending on third, and it doesn't. Where the city council.
No, I'm.
First, what did you get a piece you want to put on there to make it now? Or take one off? Make it seven, but it's fine. We can always change this.
Well, we, we work on a minute, I'll be figuring the order out, so it's kind of. So, I make a motion to accept Grace White, Aliza Duncan, Sky Hamilton, Marta Olivera, Stephanie Hodges, Peggy Villa, Villa, Villa Gomez, Kara Bishop, and Carrie Bigelow on the holiday events committee.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to the point, Grace White, Aliza Duncan, Sky Hamilton, Marta Olivera, Stephanie Hodges, Peggy Villa Gomez, Kara Bishop, and Carrie Bigelow to the city of Galveston, events committee. Any further discussion? No further discussion, stop.
Aye.
Aye.
I have a motion to pass it to you in this. I will know, discussion of possible action on approving the revised preliminary plat for hostile seventeen.
This is a plat that y'all have reviewed before. Our office had some review this, we completed our review, the plat was received by modest twenty-three. Purpose of the revised preliminary plat was to correct skimpers errors. And, uh, your engineer recommends approval of the revised preliminary plat. Have you any questions for me?
More of a watch, I agree.
Uh, block seven, fifty-five, I want forty, I think.
Eighty thousand.
Thank you.
Eighty thousand.
Yes, sir. Most of the word is six thousand square foot range.
Yes, sir.
Why aren't they these seventy-five hundred foot square, foot square foot range?
Well, this is because we passed a preliminary plat sometime back. This is just a revising of that plat. This is just the correct errors that were made on the plat in lettering and, and words. Scripter errors.
It doesn't miss me far enough. No, this is E T J.
It's in E T J today, yes, ma'am. The property to the north of it, to the east of it, and to the west of the rural city.
I work as the statewide intake for the Johnson County Children's Advocacy Center, so I work with, uh, Ken Trammell down there, he always shows up for any of the forensic interviews that, uh, we hold on child abuse and most of the smaller police departments don't do that, they're not able to listen to people. But Godly, I'm always, uh, proud of them, they always think an officer will be on to, uh, be there for the interviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony, what Tori Reyes? Is there a Reyes in the house?
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, I am a new citizen here in Galveston, I lived here about a year and a half. Uh, my short and sweet, I live, live here in Southlake. Uh, I work in Aveo. Uh, so obviously you know why I'm living in Southlake. To God, it's a little bit of a short of distance, meaning open one door, and then just go there. The disaster up there. Uh, in Southlake, we have a great police force. Uh, but since I've lived here a year and a half, I have seen all these officers in different areas going above and beyond what I've seen in Keller and in Sata. Okay, so, I, I strongly suggest and I strongly advise keeping officers that are part of the community in your community. You know officers like in Sata that live in Addison or they live in Ullis? They're not part of the community. Uh, I think it's very important that you keep. I think it's very important that you keep sustainability with Officer Ken Tral. I worked with your wife, and your mother now, or your mom, out in Abreu. And I think it's very important to keep those officers within the community. If you don't, you'll be you'll have officers like in Southlake and in Keller. And I'm not saying they're not good officers, I'm just saying they're not they're not going to be part of the community. They're going to roll things off. And I have seen, I saw you last week, in the burning heap out there in that, they'll know what they think that was going on. And and she was in uniform burning up, the talking citizens, you were talking to people. People you knew, obviously you knew, and people that came up to talk to you, and you took the time to talk to them. In that burning heap, and I assume all the officers doing stuff like that. So I just wanted to say, I wanted to put my my endorsement for Ken Tral. And I think we should, these officers probably need to stay there, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Jake Houston? Alex Rizzo?
Hey, I'm looking for fun tonight. First of all, thank you all for having me. I wanted to dress up when I started work day, so I can change, so please, I'm sorry for my appearance. Um, I'm getting a little bit out myself, my name's Alex Rizzo. I've worked for the state of Godly Police Department for a little under a year. Before that, I was in Florida. I relocated over here to Texas because my husband had a job with Milwaukee. So I came over here, and we settled down in Godly, the area that we liked it. I was in Florida as a medical death investigator, did that for about seven years, that's investigating autopsies, doing the crime scene with it, just talking to people in the most unfortunate situations. Moving forward from that, because obviously I've been longer here, I wanted to make a difference. So I got involved in crime scene investigation. When I was doing the crime scene investigation, I did that for about two years, it's kind of reached on TV, but a little bit more intricate. You do blood stager, you investigate the scenes, you do DNA, processing evidence, testifying court, numerous and numerous times where obviously it's going to be one of those intense cases where you can provide facts, documentation, for letting stills to make a difference, so I wanted to do a little bit more. So I got involved in law enforcement, I wanted to make a positive difference. I know we're not perceived really positive in the news and stuff like that, but I wanted to make a difference. I wanted someone to reach out to us and be able to see that working is just like everyone else, you know? This this department is amazing, and it's not because obviously we don't do it for the pay, because let's be honest, you know? You have a high risk, low reward with the amount of money that we get for what we do. Never know if we're going to come home or not, but things that we see that you see, the trauma that we deal with, dealing with people that most of the time don't have prior experiences with us, but it's a fantastic department, you got to know us. That's why we're trying to have outings, we're trying to get involved with you, so you can come out and talk to us, you know? We're pretty friendly, I know the most of them come contact with you, if I'm holding in my lights on behind you, but you just stop out and talk to us, we're we're humans. But getting to the, really quickly, the discussion, I want to address the pay, the retirement, community opinion, and the future. Compared to the Texas agencies, we are one to one on our retirement, which is really disappointing. I know we had a person back in December just pop here today, say that it's okay, it's not okay, six percent's a joke. No one wants to be an officer working with what we do for an average, an extra seventeen years on top of it. I don't think you want a sixty-five-year-old officer in a foot pursuit, and I'm not saying that they can't handle it, but it's a long time. On top of that, we don't get paid well, you know? I know we can allocate certain things, but when we put this new budget in, we are going to be the lowest-paying department for what we do. We would like a two to one retirement, which is seven percent, they match us, it really helps out and makes a difference. And I'm fortunate enough to work for other departments where I can see, in the state of Texas, it makes a difference. We are, I am qualified, you know, with my my degrees, I'm going to be an advanced police officer next month. With my four years of previous law enforcement that I did mention from Florida, I mean, over here, me being a seven-day death investigator, as well as my choosing crime scene, you're not going to find someone that's going to have this experience, that's going to stay in this department for what they get paid, for what they're qualified to do. You know, you want people that are going to be able to treat your loved ones, and so best thing you can do is get a thorough investigation. You're going to find people that, what I'm going to start calling it, is not the rejects, the rookies over here. You're going to have the people that are going to go from department to department to department, that aren't going to be qualified. You're going to have unfortunately bad apples that aren't going to want to be here if you don't treat them well. And then on top of that, you're going to have the rookies that we've had in the last five years, under different, under different chief, over thirty different officers that come in, they get their training, and they get out, and they go somewhere else. If you want stability, if you want people that get to know your neighborhood, come around and talk to you, know where you live, know things about you, say hi to your kids, not going to be afraid of you. You're going to want to keep us, you're going to want to see that we have a lot of things to offer to you guys. I know I'm new to the city, and like, you know, just like the new council members, they have to prove themselves, and do the part of making better tomorrow. So does the PD. I don't want to have bad turmoil. I don't know what happened with the previous police department, the chief, and things like that, but we're new. I can't tell you that working for an amazing chief, Ken Tral, he didn't have to step up and be chief. He took that position to help us out, he's so family-oriented, he's so understanding, that's saying that there's an open door, it's literally an open door. He'll work a holiday for you, so I can be there with my newborn, he like goes above and beyond. We're trying to get more involved with community, we are really trying to have more events, helping out local places, we're having a meeting at February one, seven, one. I really need you to smile, it's September twenty-third, we had a great outcome at Small Town Kitchen, they're fantastic. I want to see new faces, I want to be part of you guys, I want you to look to me and say, hey, what's going on, let's see your newborn, let's talk about it, you know? We're growing fast, so we need to get all on the same page. Want to be happy, you want to love where you live, let's do our part, and let's give everyone a chance.
Thank you, Alex. Terry Fidlow?
Hello, citizens and council members, thank you for allowing us to speak. I can't say that good things about the police department, Chief Ken Tral, he did an awesome job, and I think the people that have spoken before me have said it all, so I can't really speak much about that. But I, or I do that, I do want to speak about six H, which is Michael's application for city administrator. And I did go back to his qualifications, and what we're requiring as a city is a highly qualified professional. I don't think, honestly, Michael's previous experience qualifies him, in addition to the fact that in the city, city, city council member, we did have a previous interim city administrator working when he resigned because of Michael's professionalism in showing up to attend a meeting with Mr. Primples. He stated in his resignation letter that there were people on the city council that had their own agendas, and Michael was one of them. Maybe in his resignation letter, and it was Michael confirmed. And I was at the city council meeting three different times, Michael asked if he would meet him first thing in the morning, Mr. Primples said, yes, he would. But Michael didn't show up, he didn't have the professionalism to call and let him know why he wasn't going to be there, or that he was delayed a text, nothing, he didn't show up. That is total unprofessionalism, and I don't think we need that here in our city. We've got enough bad things going on, and that people speaking about our city now, and it makes me really sad, but I think there's somebody out there that and I appreciate the work he's done, I do, but I don't think he's qualified, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fidlow. Dennis Law?
Good evening, council, and I just want to thank you guys for everything you guys have been doing for the city. And I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Rick. Is that okay, before I start?
You know, have the rules of prestige here, it doesn't talk, so that's all they got to do.
Yeah, can you start, I'm sorry, I can, and also, you guys have the option to allow my open comments to be done at the item of discussion, the A G says you don't have to, but you have the option. Can I speak before the item of discussion, or do I need to speak now, it's up to you guys?
I don't want anybody speaking anytime long, it's the rules, I mean, where people are.
Not during, but before the item of discussion?
Yeah, so the department is, if you speak before or during the discussion, or the item, so you can do it now, or you can do it later, talk to open this up again to everyone else to speak as well. And in in general, all minutes should be the same for the item that we're speaking, so for your public hearing section right now, maybe appropriately five minutes. If you want to open it up again, as each agenda, additional people that are commenting, you can do that.
I would like to wait till that, please, thank you. My item is, um, F and G. F and G.
Jake Houston out there. Please, anybody else like to speak, I didn't sign up? This time, a presentation, a two-day presentation by Brett Roden, his husband, regarding small animal hospital located at the corner of North Main and 117 West Grand.
My name is Brett Roden, and this is Dr. Mason Urban, Ohio State. I want to start by thanking the city council tonight, and everyone who's shown up to support our city in how do you see fit. The opportunity to highlight a very well-known member of our community who's highly thought of is a great opportunity, and so we appreciate it. Dr. Urban has a track record for excellent care and customer service in treating you and your animals here in the city of Godly for several years, years, at Godly Animal Clinic. I'm going to turn it over to him, and let him describe how he plans to service your animals in the future at his new location at one oh one West Grand Street, near Godly.
Thanks, Brett. Thanks, council members, for opening up your time to discuss a small business here in your community. I just kind of want to discuss what Godly Animal Clinic will be. So we're leasing the space on West Graham to open a small animal hospital. And so for the past two years, my business has been mobile-exclusive, which means we travel to homes around Godly and the surrounding communities to take care of the pets and livestock that they may have. We, just like many of the other small businesses in our community, have found that there are a lot of people moving here, and they're all moving with their pets. And so we've decided to open a small animal hospital to cater, meet the needs of the community. Currently, we're the only other, we're the only veterinary service within the city of Godly, that serves the city of Godly. So we're going to open a small animal hospital to service dogs and cats in Godly and the surrounding communities if they decide to come in. We're pretty excited that we're going to be offering, you know, modern technologies in our in our new clinic, so digital radiography, ultrasound, endoscopy, all very expensive, as I might say, and high-level veterinary medical equipment. We hope to expand our staff as well to to meet the needs, because my services alone won't be able to meet the needs of the animals in the community. I hope, council members, that you will support our support our business and encourage our business to grow. The city faces many animal problems that need to be addressed. I hope that I can work alongside the council members here to help address those. You know, many things that are of concern would be the zoonotic diseases such as rabies, bites, and then obviously the stray and unwanted animal problem. So we'll be offering services that help eliminate that. And we hope that, you know, y'all can take take pride in what we're doing, and we hope that we can assist the city as well. Because unfortunately, my business already has had to take on priorly some of the problems of dealing with animals. And most of that's just out of kind of kindness of our hearts, so I encourage y'all to to continue to support small businesses, and, you know, I developed questions about the small animal hospital and the services that we'll be offering, you know? I'm happy to take those.
I do, are you, I have an agenda tonight regarding strays. Are you going to, are you saying you'll be able to offer animal control services in some sense?
So, no, not initially, no. We can assist, and I've seen it in other cities where a veterinarian may have to assist, especially those animals that are special hangers and need medical enrichment and need containment. I think that, you know, rabies quarantine and things like that won't be able to be done at the facility, but it's, you know, it would have to, we'd have to discuss it further, you know? Obviously, my time is spent with sick patients most of, so my personal assistance.
So Brett, as you already know, I've talked about a couple of areas. Specifically, we already talked about the one fifty-four, which is the district. We need to talk about ninety-one dot zero six, which is animal noise, and chapter ninety-five, which is noise regulations. I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure y'all were aware, I didn't know if y'all could have outside kills or anything.
Yeah, we need to talk. Yeah, so, you know, we're purchasing indoor kennels, and we will need a yard of some sort for, you know, obviously outdoor walking and things like that, but we don't have any plans of extensive outdoor kennels. It's mainly meant for medical treatment, we're not going to be offering boarding services. Medical for y'all.
Will where you walk the animals, is it the limit of the time you're doing, where were you, will, where will you do it?
It would be in the the yard of of the.
Yeah, that's the amount of time, like your hours.
Oh, hours, too, yeah, 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 so typically, the, obviously, morning walks whenever the staff arrives, and then they will do a last walk at the end, and then throughout, so mostly it'd be between hours, about seven and six.
I just think one of the concerns, I think it's a great idea, but I think one of the concerns that we talked about was just the houses around it, that again, the outside store of them was not working, and that's it, at my time, that was totally.
Don't want to be within. Well, thank you, and welcome to have a quick and wonderful conversation.
Thank you.
This time, we move on to our district business. East Department slash Department of Enforcement.
All right, so the book, August, East Department had two hundred eighty-six calls in service. Something called something had, or seven accidents, five alarms, fifteen head patrol calls, one assault, eighteen assists counties or agencies, spoiled system orders, thirty-one scene notices, one parental mischief, reported a hundred dollar worth of damage, two disorderly conducts, five disturbances. twelve assist orders, thirty-one scene notices, one parental mischief, resulted in a hundred dollar total damage, two disorderly conducts, five disturbances, one fraud, one follow-up, one missing person that we were able to locate, and five, sixty-seven P R contacts, twenty-nine public services, five records requests, six records drivers, one theft, resulting in nine hundred dollars of destruction, twelve vehicle searches and three water races that included one, uh, case being followed from down.
Gee, I don't have that one back.
I, you have over two, Mary Proten.
Fair enough.
Uh, we also received, uh, had a total of 285 track stops, resulted in 334 total violations. Seven, one of them would be in citations, 283 would be in warrants.
Or is the good violations?
So, uh, some of them were, uh, four of them were city properties for Hollygrass, and, uh, some trash, abandoned hot valley bikes. Uh, that was taken care of, you know, of course, took care of. A lot of them were, you know, uh, abandoned vehicles, people's property, junk, junk vehicles.
Need me to clear your council?
For the month of August, part of us responded to 29 incidents. By the way, this is a little bit updated numbers from what's in your packet because reports got weighted. It's just not in your packet. We have a total of 168 calls throughout this, 29 fires, 81 rescue and emergency medical services, two hazardous conditions, 21 service calls, 28 good and ten calls, and seven false alarm calls. If you'd like, I can make you a copy of this and the breakdown sheet of it's a little more specific. Or you can actually take that into, yeah, just to show it is wrong. Okay. Some of them, when we input them in the computer, they get classified in specific ways. Uh, fire other becomes one. Don't know what that might have been. Building fire, we had two. Trash or brush fire, three. Natural vegetation fire, two. So, natural vegetation fire, two, brush fire, that's all going to be similar, some type of grass or wild lamp fire. Nat- natural vegetation fire other was two, forest woods, and for a wild lamp fire, three. Brush or brush, grass fire mixture, eight. Outside brush fire, two. Medical assist, assist EMS crew was 44. That, for your understanding, typically, if we and A R agents get on scene at the same time, then it's being classified as a medical assist, so that's 44. EMS call excluding vehicle accident with injury, 23. That means we were on scene for an extended period before the ambulance arrived. What are vehicle accident with injuries for? What are vehicle accident with no injuries for? Power lines down, one. Parking shorted, electrical equipment, one. Person in distress, seven. Lockout, three. Water or steam leak, one. Smoke levels removed, one. Assist police or other governmental agency, one. Police matter, one. Public service, one. Assist employee, four. Unauthorized burden, two. Good intent call other, two. Dispatch and canceling route, thirteen. Low incident found it, law and law related. A dispatch address was 11. Smoke scare, over smoke, one. Steam vapor, fog, or dust, blood to be smoked, one. False alarm or false call, seven.
Is lockout, should I interpret that as? Literally?
Generally, it's a vehicle lockout. Um, we, we do not unlock vehicles unless there's an animal or a child inside your car. So, that would come in case if it was either a animal or a child. Because black will, it is, you know. Just unlock cars for people. Any questions? Is that it? Okay. Thank you.
Public works. Good evening, council, good evening, citizens. Good evening. This month, we have performed 213 locates. We have started getting inspection ready for T C Q, which can come at any time within the next three months. They'll give this call, will be, they'll be here within a couple of days. Uh, with that, we're getting quotes for a few repairs and getting some water meters changed out. Sewer, we're continuing to flush and pressure clean sewer lines. Uh, parks, mo- mowing is still slowed down. We've received a couple of bids from plumbers to repair the water fountains and sinks at the park. Uh, streets, we have started filling some of the, the worst areas with rock asphalt, in which bottle filling will continue. And then, other than that, I've rece- I have received the authorization to take my wastewater class C license by T C Q, and I've set the date to September 15th of 2023 to test. Uh, other than that, I got a phone call while I was waiting to come in here to do my, my portion. We do have a small leak coming from a meter in the 100 block of South Six. It doesn't require an overnight response for overtime. It will be getting on to first thing, eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
Quick, any questions? Sir, the hole that's at ground 917, um, is there a schedule on?
Um, I've got pothole repair for set for Friday of this week. So, every week, we're going to have this one day of pothole repairs, so that way we can get them done. Uh, I talked to Joshua's public works director today, and they can't come and help us right now. Their stuff is plus with, uh, with the heat the way it is, it wouldn't do no good. We've got to do it sometime in springtime, because if not, then the chip and seal is just not going to hold. So.
We can't use that new fancy fancy stuff.
What they do, if they come in and fill it, and then come back and just chip and seal. So, we can't do any of that until springtime, because if it's too hot, it won't hold. If it's too cold, it, it gets set too quick. So, when I talk to him today, that's what he advised me of. Um, precinct one commissioners, I'm still waiting for a call from them to find out from them when they will be able to, to help us out by coming and helping do it as well. So, um, and other than that, I've got no more information on it. I mean, we're just going to be trying to rock along with the rock asphalt. Better than nothing at this point.
And the gentleman's yard.
Um, we're going to bring him over here for the Dodger. Yes, sir. I'm waiting to be able to have money in the budget to be able to go get some, uh, top fuel in San Augustine. I'm going to put Bermuda, next animal to San Augustine, wouldn't be right. We, we tore up San Augustine, so I would like to replace it the way it was or better. Not so far.
Crystal over, I'm just asking you a bit before last, we talked about Grant guy in here. About five and a half hour file and applying. What, what was down on that?
Uh, I got all the valves, uh, sent over to Glenn, so it is now in their hands. All the sizing of all our valves and locations have been sent over. So, now, I don't know what y'all got going on, but it has been sent over to, uh, speaking of that, Atlas Foundation will be here next week to use your foundation for whether or not. We're going to do a couple inches at a time, stop, and make sure everything's good. So.
Only Grant, Howie, our top line is almost up. Where we at now with Grant? Oh, we Mr. Grant or Mr. Gil?
Oh, we're good.
Your friends for it?
We're fine. We have to be, construction has to be completed by February.
Right. We got to get this out and all that, so. We're fine. I'm riding it down, Glenn. Maybe I'll face him.
Oh, yes, that's right. Those three figures, I guess.
Did you get the, uh, culprit changed out on Allen?
No, sir. Uh, one and Allen is seven.
He has still a hole there.
There's still a hole there. We're still trying to get a hold of who we can actually get a caller from without spending arm and a leg. If council wants to approve, I can get local pricing, and we can just buy one right now at this time, but that's a council going to get pricing from local.
Is it dangerous?
It's not dangerous. It's just going to be way more expensive than if we go to a bulk purchase.
No danger of, like, driving over the hole at this time and causing us problems with the car or?
Right now, it's at a spot to where it's not going to cause danger unless somebody is cruising through there at a high rate speed. I will say that.
I know we had discussed about the hole. Did we already approve for this?
No, no.
I thought we had.
So, what are your options on getting this over?
Right now, uh, we can wait and find out from East Texas, a couple of bulk dealers on the price of getting bulk, or we can just go local and spend high money and get one right now and go ahead and get it popped out.
So, the reason it hasn't been done is because of the $500. Y'all want your ex town hit one with a full, I think, paper or rounds, $500?
They were between seven and a thousand dollars just for the call. That's not counting anything else, is it?
And how much is the bulk price?
Bulk price, we'd probably get bulk for three, four hundred a piece, but we'd have to buy multiples.
How many do we need?
Well.
Now, I mean, we.
By now, we're probably needing up two or three, to be honest with you. But actual emergency needs is just one at this time.
So, we can also get a break for the price of one.
Let's do it. Hard rock.
How long would it take if we imported them?
I can't give you lengths right now. I'll find out tomorrow morning and let you know.
It's hot. People walk in the east. It's going to be dark. Someone's going to step in that thing and twist the book.
Yes, sir.
So, let's get it fixed.
In the meantime, I want to get up there and get some cones put up around it.
I'm authorized you to buy up to four, three, up to four coppers. That way we have.
So, are we talking about? We'll have these things.
Yes, we.
Chuckle the loops.
Then we just get one and be done with it. We're going to buy, we're going to buy three or four. Fine. We're going to buy one each? No.
The other, the other problem with getting up from East Texas and only getting four is we're going to spend the money on heading over there and getting all more hot stuff. We only get one at this time.
It's authorized us to spend a thousand dollars on coppers if it's done. You cannot, when you buy another thousand dollar copper, it's still getting the best price for the city, so let's do it. It's been up to four.
Have you checked around local in different places?
I've checked some of the pricing. I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but most of them are staying close to seven, eight hundred.
I'm on the road.
Sure.
You have your direction. I'll buy it tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Good evening, council. Three things I'd like to miss, let's see all about this evening. We, uh, had a report, and I started writing once ago, we had a, a, a high flow through the retention pond at the higher lakes subdivision. Since that happened, we have, uh, engaged the engineering firm that originally did the calculations. I've had another firm look over those calculations, confirmed that the, the first company did a good job. I had a different person come and look at them at the calculations. And, uh, I've been out and investigated the, the pond itself that was constructed in accordance with the plans and in accordance with the rainfall numbers. We just had a free flow. So, I, I'm telling, looking to know that the pond has been constructed to what it's supposed to be, and it shouldn't be a problem in the future, but we never know. If the rainfalls we get, you know, we either get something or off of the line. Uh, wastewater treatment plant operation was the main thing I wanted to talk to you all about tonight. I know that, uh, Kevin and his guys out there and Danny Anderson have been, uh, working as hard as they can to keep our wastewater treatment plant operating, but our wastewater plant is, uh, you may or may not know, I turn in the monthly reports to the, to the E P A and to the state of Texas on the wastewater treatment plants. So, the test results from every week's testing that takes place down there, I have copies of. And I have noticed over the last four, five, one, two, three, forty-five months in a row, we have failed to meet our discharge requirement on ammonia nitrogen. And ammonia nitrogen is a chemical that, that is a, it's a process, it's a part of the treatment system. We get it free. It comes in, and then we get it free going out, and there's different ways to treat it. Mostly, it's treated with a lot of air. I've also noticed that on the agenda, even later on tonight, we're, uh, discussing financing the repairs of blowers down there. I've been down there, in fact, I was down there this evening before I came to the meeting, and we have four blowers down there, four compressor units. Two of them are in operation, two of them are sitting there gathering dust, and they're not hooked up in any way, shape or form. We, we have a first name on as public works director. He didn't know why they were sitting there. And we haven't yet determined whether the two blowers that are sitting there are functional or not, that they're sitting there not being used. We have a low amount of air flowing into our wastewater plant, and that's causing considerable problems. Our, our most recent test, we tested on six different things in the wastewater plant. And four of those are coming back really good, and we're starting to, and, and the ammonia nitrogen is coming back really, really bad. We, we're permitted to discharge three parts per million of ammonia nitrogen. The last five weeks, 28, 36, 43, 26, and 41. The permit is for 43. Every month I've turned this in, I get concerned because when I turn it in, I have to acknowledge that we're not meeting requirement. Sooner or later, somebody's going to wake up from their little COVID world, and they're going to look at their computer screen. So, let me put a segment. Oh, my. Let's go bounce down on top of Elvis's head if there was a font. I don't want us to be put in that position. I'd like y'all still okay to work with Kevin to see if we need more air down there, if we need more air. It's going to be 10 to 20,000 dollars to get in under compressor of the type we use. I've told him repeatedly, if you need more air or you need something else, let me know, and I'll break it to council. Because I, 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 sometimes I feel like if I bring it to you and I say it's urgent need, it gets your attention a little bit more quickly than he says, I don't know, I got some stuff that's not working just right. Just saying, okay? Because I'm not going to come in here and holler wolf if there's not a wolf coming down the street. We have a pneumonia problem. We, Kevin, myself, and our hired operator need to do something to get that taken care of. It's been brought to my attention five consecutive months, and I've mentioned it to Kevin in emails, and I've mentioned it to Danny in emails, and we're still having problems. We paid Danny as a, as a consultant and a contractor to come out and, and operate our wastewater treatment plant. And right now, I'm not thrilled with what we're getting. He knows it. I mean, we've discussed it. So, we've got to do something in that direction. We, uh, have times in the past, two of y'all have been on the council, when we spent 20 to 80,000 dollars to haul sludge out of that wastewater plant. We're almost to that point. We have been in our construction of our new wastewater plant. We have one don't basically for, for sludge. We now have three, and we still have a tank full of sludge. So, I don't know whether we're producing extra sludge or whether we're not. So I don't know whether we're producing extra sludge or whether we're not managing it quite properly. We probably need somebody from the manufacturer of the equipment that came out to come out here and show our guys what needs to be done in order to get sludge out of that plant more quickly. Because we're getting a lot of sludge, we're hauling sludge. We don't wanna put ourselves back in a position where we were eighteen years ago where we're spending eighty thousand dollars and having a tank of trucks haul all the down from here to Austin. Five times a day with sludge. Well, it's good news.
Are you guys, is, if we need more is all we need or we need something else?
I don't know. I don't know. I may have to try an operator to go to an anoxic oxygen condition out there. I don't know. At this time, I can't answer.
But we definitely need the bulls.
We need more air.
We need more air. Yes.
So would it be beneficial to, like you just said, to have the managers come in and give us advice on that we spend the money on the blowers? We talked about another aerating system, uh, installed, I guess, is a new thing. So should we get that device before we spend the money on the blower? Try to get that done as soon as possible?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, and, you know, I have people that I can call and get in here that know what they're doing. Kevin's probably got some people on speed dial that he can talk to. I mean, we just, we need some expertise. Somebody that plays into the whole thing. They understand.
The blowers are just regular, no, that's all blowers?
They're, they're pretty good sized blowers.
Regular air.
We got, we got two over at the wastewater plant right now that are not in operation. One is actually hooked up and all we gotta do is get the electric to hook up and it'll be ready to go. Uh, we had a fresh guy come out and take a look at it to give us a bid and he turned it, it's not frozen or anything like that. So I've got, part of the agenda tonight is giving the blow to try to get authorization to get that hooked up and get it running. So. Hear that? We're not like, we're just gonna start running. But it's, I've done a lot of research on it and it, everything that, that's saying is it needs more air. So I think at least getting one of them done right away is gonna help to manage this deal.
Well, I think that's something we've been talking about for a month or so, like, so we've been waiting on, we've been trying to get multiple bids, but we're finding a narrow market there.
That, that's correct. It is. Now, we have five new blowers on our new wastewater treatment plant expansion. There's two blowers, or two blowers on the old wastewater plant that were re, reconditioning and there's three blowers on the new plant. And there's two blowers identical to these sitting inside are failing right now, but are not, if the one that's hooked down now, the second one is not. And I don't know what happened, but about four operators ago, some, a salesman came in and convinced that operator that the type of blowers that we have down there today would be better than what we had previously. But we're putting in five more of what we had previously. So I wasn't involved in that decision. That was a decision made by a former council and I, I assumed came before council, but it was, it was an operator long, long ago, several years back. The construction of the new wastewater treatment plant is slowing because of the heat. Most of the work is out. No work's down. There are no buildings. There's one building I can put in there for this, because I don't want those guys to die down there. I think that's what it is. It's, it's hot to work and we're not getting thirty hours a day on construction. We've got a pay request right now that's, I'm just now looking at it, I'm just seeing. I have that pay request due tomorrow or today. Ask her, they're not asking for much money right now. I mean, it's, it's, there's nothing going out. She's perfectly fine with it. We know that we're not gonna be ready to hook up and go until December sometime. Some of them are just doing anything like this. Hook up and go, we fired up, fired down. So at that point, is, you'd hit in combination with go? Oh yeah, absolutely. Yes. We'll be able to use the two older ones. I mean, you have to use the one that was built in ninety-three, ninety-one, ninety-one, two thousand and seven, and now they're twenty-three. They're all being at the same time. We don't need them. Flow wise, we don't need them. But.
What's our capacity at the moment?
Four hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day, which is approximately. I'm sorry. So today's flows, we're gonna be more than double what we have right now. We're running right now on a really wet day, twenty, two hundred thousand gallons a day. And we'll be able to treat four sixty, or sixty thousand.
Do you have AC? Sir? Do you have AC? No, we got, we got the windage right now. It starts to trickle down, so we're good enough to afford to get one in. But uh, what I would like to do is whenever that new plant is able to come online, I'd like to switch over to it and get the plant that it's in right now cleaned up, any kind of repairs taken care of and anything like that. Because that thing's been running consistently, probably at least ten years.
Two thousand and seven.
So since two thousand and seven. So I would like to get switched over to where all the flow goes into the new plant. So we can take this one down and do maintenance, clean it up, you know, get everything fixed up on it. Next to a plant less than once it's good.
How is the brush repaired?
Uh, I got quoted by email today. Uh, it's only one company that we can get that he wants to quote it. But it's looking a little over two thousand dollars for them to come in and put the brush on it. We've already got the brush. So as soon as we get the brush, or as soon as we get authorization to get that brush put on, then it'll be put on and that'll help tremendously with our solids going into the plant.
What authorization are you waiting for?
Uh, I didn't get the quote until the day, so I've been putting in the agenda from the night. It's two thousand, it's sixty dollars. It's above my five hundred threshold.
I guess my question too would be, what do we need to do to, every little thing like this doesn't have to come with what it comes? I mean, how do we give them a little larger threshold for things like this issue? I mean, everything over five hundred dollars, they're kind of, I mean, it's such, it's, well, how do we control that a little less? In the department head, we should try and get that, but how do we? Hold on.
You don't extend the vast. Yeah, the vast does do what we're doing. That's all one's through from the department head to the city administrator.
Can we give us something like purchase orders through, I mean, something like that with, like you said, the city administrator? So all, all this is not, they're not having to wait so long. They're not having to delay purchases. We're not bogged down with all this. And I don't mean it in a, that all this type kind of thing that you've actually handled. We should, they need to operate. That's something that has.
It's something that need to run the plant.
Yeah. So how would we, how would your, how would we fix that?
We authorize, we have endless payments and we have records down in the past. There has been posted in the, any, yes. Y'all just have to say yes and.
Do we need an order? So we need some cost to do that? So the next purchasing, a little bit less, not on management?
Yeah, I think you did all that. I was really wrong to say we need a city administrator. So I would just. So all these policies, I'm sure you could put it nicely, but it's been shared or you can go through the policy board.
So will they still have to go to the city administrator for every five miles they want to send? Or is that something that he could put in a policy to do here?
Yeah.
Or here?
Sure, we could look at, we could look at providing the burdenses, amending policies. Um, probably this policy sets a standard for you up to fifty thousand dollars for competitive bidding, I understand a lot of others. Um, then if they're town manager, they're city administrator down to, you know, five thousand. So it just depends on what you want to do with the council.
On this thing, you know, we're making this that they have to come to me for a few or five hundred and I have to come to you all for a few.
Well, yeah, I was, Phil, I was just, the ladies, the, the things that need to be done.
We believe in you. Don't feel this, that's.
Do you have any questions, please?
One question, a lot of the act of this, the fire hydrant, inside the bins over there.
They're still there.
We'll find out why it was covered over, we went, all against the end.
At the last meeting that I attended, we discussed that you instructed the representative of the council to hear that evening. If she could look in for you, see, we, then we have a fire hydrant that's behind the private fence. And the owner of the private fence has said, touch my fence, I sue the city. It's my fire hydrant. It's a, they all know this, not his fire hydrant. The fire hydrant's built within the vital way of the public, the road. He's just extended his fence out.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, so.
Sounds okay.
Okay.
We'll make sure that, one of your, we'll get that.
Thank you. Would you, do you have some?
He is, um, vaccinated and authorization to, or staff direction.
We gotta have, I don't know if TK or any, did TK.
I don't know if you need that.
Maybe you can go over, probably, and they would still get the rest of the money that you want. Let's get it fixed.
And that's why.
The fine amount will start with two numbers to the left of the comma. I will promise you that. Possibly three.
That will go, you have no way there.
TCQ's gonna be the same way.
The brush is low with, what, two hundred and sixty?
That was like twenty-six hundred, a little over twenty-six hundred, if I'm not mistaken. I looked at it this morning.
You guys?
I've got it, absolutely. Making it not. All, everything's going in the plant. We're not picking up any fine grit. We're not picking up any rags, grease, none of that. It's all just free flowing in the plant right now and it's killing our bugs, in which our bugs is what we need to keep alive, healthy, the bacteria.
Do you have the brush assistance ordinance?
We've got the brush board. Already purchased the brush.
So what, what, what about the blow? What do we decide can we?
Kevin, we get it.
Well, Mayor, Mayor would send it before.
We got an estimate for the electrical hookup of the blower. He just got it today. Let's present it right now.
You'll be presenting it right now?
If y'all, if y'all are, well, if y'all are worried about spending a few, or maybe, is Mary agenda, or agenda next week? Is there any?
They said.
Let me answer this one. What I'm finding out bringing back is individual items appropriate to the council. Because what I'm hearing is a lot of members, or items that are generally identified and none of this category are probably not specific. The guy that is more appropriate for our actions, individual items.
Even the one there, we use it to.
So what is your, what's your expenditure?
So I have policies, a thousand, I think it was changed last year.
Yeah. We're gonna execute your contracts right now.
These two.
Yeah, so let's, I say, these items, we don't understand any of the direction we're going to give bids, but I think we can bring back.
I've got major blowers tonight and a bid for the brush for tonight.
Yeah, so, but it's not on the agenda.
So the blower is on.
The blower is on.
This one, don't I?
The blower is. So let's, let's take the agenda and use that on that.
The family here has a lot of big pressure on.
Do you like that?
So the city administrator, economic development portion, charity bonds have been obtained from police officers that expire on this twenty-third, twenty-two, twenty-six. Our side of the degree, there isn't a physical year twenty-three, it may have been submitted to state. We had an armed possession and our view for a burning fire that will go through, also in the next meeting. And now we need to talk about some larger issues. So in your packet, you're at least, you're getting an A list, that was read after. You got twenty-three days. Recount the aging report? Yes. So we heard they have, we've seen on our site with the water, that they're gonna start shut off this one. It's supposed to start there. We decided to move it to Thursday. We gave them a little bit of extra time. We made an additional Facebook post today about it. And about, just for accounts that are over sixty days, we had about twenty-six thousand dollars for the largest. We're. So if you look on the page, one of the very, like, third, last page, it'll be gave that account twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Only problem is that I have, I'm over that, it's like, you can't see account number. But I was in all the accounts, they're great for me. About a hundred dollars all the way to the thousand. It took that, you know, but, yeah, it was six thousand. So the reason why I bring this up is because the other paper that you got is labeled arrangement agreement. Any of you who are, you can set up payment arrangements that it'll automatically track those. So this is an actual example that we did today. Actually on my account. So it's the account number, name, service address of the town. You want new arrangements right above the signature line, how many active arrangements we have. I have, I have six hundred dollars. I go for days two thousand and six point one. That'll be put on file. And then that's a short term. I'll have to pay off that additional and ask more funds up as water doesn't put out. But I'll sign this and then you may make the arrangement or the contract that will say I can pay my water bill plus one hundred dollars so that I can catch up over a period of time. Because some of these, their businesses and personal thousand dollars, I'm prepared to be able to take those. Because Thursday, or I felt the water. I don't wanna be part of this. Some of these have to pay your bills after this year.
Thirty-two thousand dollars, six, thirty-two, six, one, six, one, five, check.
Or we can.
I don't think one, two, three, if you look at all of it, somewhere in there. Anyway, no, no, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
So what I would like to do is set up arrangements and allow people to call it and, or come in and say, hey, this is what we would like to do. We get your one hour each bit or we get a longer contract, it's a larger amount. Apparently not everything in place for that, it's just, we're getting some water spout. We haven't done, they've cut off this entire year. So this will be our first one. Sign, there's fifty-six different accounts that are over sixty days on. They're on account, fifty-six people water.
All right, so if I'm interpreting this correctly, each redacted, so that's one account, that's a weird, that's one account.
So I understand what you're saying and I am again, so I feel not part of you. But once they're sixty days overdue and they have. But once they're sixty days overdue, and they haven't made any cost, uh, arrangements on five dollars, and they're paying nothing, we have people that are taking complete advantage because the city's been closed down, and have not bothered to come back. Unfortunately, we have businesses that are taking advantage of that, so, uh, to me, when does it become a better service? When they're not paying for the water, because in the meantime, we're paying, the citizens are paying for it. They don't pay for their water, and you're paying for it. They're not understanding hardships, they have, the hardships don't happen for nine months and not paying. And it's a good thing.
I agree, and that's why we did sixty days back. I know, like, someone I live in cycles, I checked today, I didn't get charged last month, but I got charged this month, so I'm tired, now, plus two months, went on this bill, that it's just, it's, that's this, that we were here.
You didn't get charged for the last one?
I didn't get charged for the last one, and pulled it out, so then it's written on this one's, and it's all paid, and all this is over.
Well, that doesn't make sense, because we have auditors, who may know the payment works so well, they might not know.
But that's what she found. There's been some accounts that were drastically overcharged, and I'm working on those, get a fit, and I'll make it on order to get those in here. But to expect people to pay eight, nine hundred dollars, uh, tomorrow, this kind of hard.
But is it? Because we didn't just get a notice, we did this, and we noticed over a month ago, and the ones that didn't even attempt to do it, the ones that noticed this one out, um, was that, um, water bill, when, when we be concerned with being paid, and that's enough. And again, I have a part. Um, if they came in, said hey, I'm trying to make payments, even get five dollars and get paid something, but when you keep taking advantage, it does more harm. And we're paying for the water.
So yes, that is, that's why I propose, they come in, pay eighty percent of their bill, and then from that, they pay, extra nine dollars on top of it.
So you wanna give them another, how long, from a monthly credit period? Take care of these items, and get a letter in the mail? Hey, take care of it, or October fifth, your popular water cutoff period, you have basis of a rain?
I mean, I'm still going with the Thursday, that's when I cut off their water, but hopefully they call me.
Everyone, everyone's gonna say, hello, I thought the city was shut down, I hadn't got a deal, or, or I couldn't, some excuse to blame the city on. So we need to take that excuse out of the equation.
Well, yeah, because the door's been open since, uh, maybe not now, so we're in, even kind of a building system.
Yeah. If you do your bill, just pay what you paid the month before, when you're done.
And that's almost twenty-six thousand dollars, we're trying to complain about money, I mean, about our budgets, and that's twenty-six thousand dollars that we're allowing us to keep. We're still living on that amount, and that's...
A little bit of shit out there, water bills, because if they're reaching... Having we, uh, notified, have a little bit of process, notifying them to, they'll be in here for you.
We put it on the last water bill, you know, we put it online, on their water bill standing, and they gave them a lot.
What'd you ask Tiffany?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was gonna ask Robert a question, have you ever, um, have you contacted them by phone? Because people don't open their water bills and read them.
Yes, that was the question, yes, it's actually called...
And they don't necessarily do this?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and, um...
Thank you, Tom.
Have you, um, researched the addresses to see if they are rental properties, and that person has moved out, moved in? Because that happens a lot, too.
Uh, the auditor here, this year, this audit has this list, this from him, so I don't know.
I mean, they would have to know, who lived in that house previously, if they moved off, because it has been, and it happened, they moved off, someone else moved in, and didn't, they're like, oh, the water's drunk, you don't have to do anything, so they just continue to use that water, not that much. So I found the best way in the past was to try to get a phone number, contact them, identify what the situation is, and then try to resolve it.
Yeah, we talked about that today, trying to do that, make contacts. I said the same, that, that's, because, like you said, they don't always look in the water bill, they don't look online, so maybe...
I'm gonna give you the talking about, the, maybe there was, maybe there's, there's a... Just your center.
And as far as businesses, there's no reason why businesses, I mean, they're still in business, but they're not, you know, so I think it's a matter of, if they're, they used to not pay, and they just, I mean, I...
I, I, just one person, I've been touching my business partner, and asked her if we were receiving a bill, and her, what, she and I discussed, I think I probably need to have, have someone look at, all right, I think I'm gonna pick that, me, sorry, I think the previous person stepped in, I promise you, we'll take those.
This is, this is what you tell. I get used to meet back on the phone. I like the idea of a phone call, to the people, to get a hold of them, and I like the idea of checking if it's rental property, and definitely check to see if this is the city's, uh, part of the city, to do something, I like to, my cap, probably.
Okay, so this is one of the things that was brought up when we talked about calling, is who's gonna make the phone call? As a council member, can I make those phone calls to find out? Or is this something that we have to dump on our corporate firm along with everything else that, you know?
Yeah, I'd say definitely be more appropriate for staff to do.
Well, she's the only one.
She's the only one, I realize that. Uh, we do have an ordinance, which I was updating two thousand nineteen, and that's, uh, section fifty-one thirty-three, and I outlined the procedure for this connection, and, and how , uh, hearing, just being a...
The normal ordinance, they follow that, because, if it meant to help the brother make an extra step, if we have, I think we're, like, in there, make phone calls for us. I don't care.
Fifty?
Fifty-one thirty-three. And I also, I'm also worried that, I believe, the DSHS, which the state has a program that will allow people who are getting behind on the bills to, to, just to pay, and, um, I recall, the program's called the, I'm worried, it's from the... So just keep that in mind, I think it's possible Johnson County, they're pretty certain of them.
What should it be on?
Uh, uh, I wanna say it's with DSHS, who's a partner, that I feel that it should, so I don't know if it's still applicable as of a year ago.
So my idea is we make this call sign, I'd like that, we'll make the phone call offer that, if they're in need of assistance, they're in the middle, and call away. And we were trying to help solve it, but we're solving it on this end, but again, like you were asking, what's a good way that we say, kind of tell?
Sometimes it takes a cutoff to get their tips.
Well, that's, um, after the phone call, they don't care anything, or kind of week. After the phone call?
Well, again, I don't wanna set a date, but we're gonna do this until we figure out if we're, who's gonna do the phone call, who's gonna do the research. Again, so they're, so we're gonna do this in two weeks, and then we...
No, I, I, I think the auditor here will have us that information, where she's back yet, she left, but, I mean, I'll have to ask her in the show, so, as far as the context. But now, as far as the phone calls, that's something that, while we speak there, corporate to see it, that's something that she's willing to, uh, contribute and help, and, I mean, I'll, I'll try to help fill in other areas, watch, keep, maybe, it's just, that's a lot , that's one.
Mr. Ray, if you have a comment?
Yes, with all due respect, and I know what y'all are trying to do, help people out, but these people here, they were delinquent. Okay, so, y'all gotta make a tough call here, and I don't think it's fair that you let load somebody on with all that, that work, they knew they were delinquent, whether they were the landlords or not, they knew it, everybody pays their bills, and, just like I told Chris here, that's half an officer's salary. Okay, if, if you're thinking about money, I, I would think of it in balance terms, because it's not fair to the people that do pay, and I'm not, I know it sounds cold-hearted, and that's a hard job to do, but, but, what I would do is cut the water off, and then give them an option on the payments to turn it back on. I would do it the reverse way, so that they know, hey, we're on top of it, you know, and, and the excuse of this being shut down is gone, and we're, we're back to business, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
The, I have one question, that they may be the hot truck on, we'll make them, um, just turn the water off, and if we turn it off, and, because we talked about, they have to shut off on Friday, so they don't hold, shut it off, may on Monday, may, then on Tuesday, we have to turn it back on, we see, or Wednesday, so that, yeah, but, we're not cold-hearted here, but, and I'm not saying they just take them, and they don't just say that that's a high salary that the people, and even though we can't afford the salary, it's still much lower than the city.
And if we turn the water off, and if you've already noticed that, but, but, if you turn it off tomorrow, if we turn the water off, we have to have this thing, and the city, I'll take your, people that kept up Thursday, my water turned off, I don't mind.
We did, yes. And we got with the program, and we got with the student, and she's taking payments and processing, so it's...
Kevin, do you have someone to spend all day trying to walk off, and run back the next, to the next couple hours?
I've got tomorrow planned, all day for water disconnects, and the next day, set for, uh, changing meters, and turning the water back on.
Yeah, I already had it all planned out.
Okay. We're a little against any state mandates, we're gonna, to turn it off here, electricity right now, probably wouldn't be allowed, so, that's true, listen.
Yeah, so you have your ordinance, that gives you a process for disconnection?
I mean, you know, if we, if we...
No, but again, I mean, I'm looking at this, this emergency financial system, it's a, a program with the state, but it's mostly focused there, uh, low, very low income, that struggle, when you're responsible.
Yeah, I found two as well, one being Texas Utility Help, and the other being Texas Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program. So I didn't do a whole lot of research on it, but I can, in order to need big, for people that do need help.
So would fifty or three prevent us from getting shots, huh?
I mean, just to prevent somebody who sent the bill, and...
Who sent the bill?
The payment is due. So I think that's the, the listing, I don't know, there is, looks like a lot of people fit the category of, of forty minutes.
You gotta be the reason for your priority, busy.
So, if tomorrow, you shut every water off, if she has not got a deal, because it wasn't taken care of in our city park? We'll fix it, I guess, issue in the streets, or, you said, we can't go here. I understand.
Our auditor is the one who's running this, the deal, and he's, um, he's a force, he is, so, I would, I would, unless they got lost.
Obviously, the kitchen, uh, chism, some places will lose a day, I say it's, it's their own call.
Well, we're not taking an opportunity to see who it is, if it's SDK, or it's chism, or something like that, it's probably a mistake, let's call them first, if it's a residence, shocking off.
Well, it should be, we should, um, it's not, it's not...
Yeah, it's, wow! No!
Yeah, it's, uh, we're, we're ready to turn off tomorrow, we'll take it off, we'll get it turned back on, if they call their name on the same day.
There's a circumstance, it's, uh, like you said, instead of coming back in, and if that's the case, then they get, it's not easy.
I know, if we, if we, you will get that.
Yes. I guess, uh, I would, uh, the next one, then that's just done.
I think the motions are pretty consistent, yeah, I presume.
Okay.
And a motion is second, for discussion, but, so, very discussion. I, I, motion passed, you hear this? I don't, A, discussion of possible action, the confirmation of Alexa, all right, as a gobby police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Yeah, great.
My question? Discussion, excuse me, Steve. Okay, discussion of possible action, the confirmation, confirmation of Alexa, all right, as a gobby police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Make a motion to approve item six A, here's the third.
I'll second.
And a motion in the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed, you hear this? That's cool.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you.
I'm in the media. Discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Gustavo Rojo as a gobby police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Something great.
So before you make a motion, are we buying?
Yes, sir.
The last one was by people, great, that'll be an asset to our department.
Rent that already?
Not all that just got.
Oh, yes, it is.
Any other questions?
So, can I ask why you chose Scott?
Yes, ma'am, I told you, obviously, the community, uh, community here, I go, since I was a kid, I wanted to be a cop, and, uh, I saw God in me, and I also, I wanna be there, I wanna give back to the community, so.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve the confirmation of Gustavo Rojo as a gobby police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Second.
I got a motion in the second, any further discussion?
When will we graduate, when?
We take the test, the eighteenth, and graduate the future.
Uh, these two people, no experience?
No.
I know, how are you going to place them in police department? Doing what, how, when, and what's due?
So they'll be going phases, uh, FTO phases, first phase, second phase, third phase, fourth phase, fifth phase. So they'll start off with, uh, one will start with, one will start on nights, one will start with Officer Morgan, one will start with, uh, most likely, Officer Timler, starting off with him, they'll do four weeks with them, and then we'll rotate them to another officer, and they'll rotate between three or four officers, and then they'll finish up with sergeant on Bill's face, and then they pass each phase, they'll be, pop that joke.
Any other discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, motion passed, you hear this? For both of y'all, once you, um, pass your academy, I'll sign your commission paperwork.
Ms. Navarrete? I think it's Navarrete. I missed, I think someone asked a question.
I just wanted to ask you the same thing, why you chose Scott?
When I was, you remember I went along with Officer Rose, she was mentioning to the houses of them, and, I'm always, I have a family. I know, I have a family, but I don't want to argue with her.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't see discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Alexander Rizzo as a government police officer.
So I saw Officer Rizzo yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And once again, she dropped by to make sure I was okay because I was laying under her car. First time I saw her, I'm laying under her car, and she was, uh, very sweet. And, um, a truck broke down in a hardware store parking lot, so we had to get Connie to come over. Told her, Officer Rizzo said, hey, why don't you let my husband come? And he'll let me. So I thought that was very nice. And then yesterday, I felt, saw her under guards, went, oh, that's good to stop. Wow. And then later on, I went to the market and I drove down Allen. I saw Officer Rizzo's second house, Allen, check, just new to the community. And I thought, that's special. I like that. So, uh, I make a motion to approve or to confirm Alexander Rizzo as a government police officer. And also, by the way, looking through her folder, she has commendations, quite a few, from the previous police departments.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 I have a motion passed, you hear this?
Hey, we're, we're doing by side and cross our D's before. So the matter, these two pieces of paper, not being filled out.
Will we just one roll these together and be held?
I really, but we got to do that.
All right.
Discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Spencer Timbler as a government police officer. Make a motion to approve the confirmation of Spencer Timbler as a government police officer.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed, you hear this? I don't need discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Scott Morgan as a government police officer.
I have a question, I have a comment. Well, I, I was driving in, I was listening to the comments from the people. Uh, I've also seen other people sit there and say, oh, the, uh, we need help with our police department. I'm facing these people, these officers. I'm going to go for, I'm fine with it. If anyone comes up and says you have a problem with an officer, do not go to Facebook. Come up here, sign and register a complaint. So number one, it can be looked at and talked about proper and it's proper, not throughout the year. If you have a problem, it's something that can be backed up, it needs to be labeled. The chief is going to want to know about his officers, we're going to want to know about the officers too. Handle it that way. If you sign something that says I have a problem with this action, it may not be a policeman itself, it may just be an action at one time. That's my, that's where I, that's all I get. That's all I would say.
I want to make a motion to confirm Scott Morgan.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed, you hear this? I don't have discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Eric Orna as a government police officer. Now, we did allow Mr. Cooper to talk before the item.
Do I get the two minutes? Five, okay. I'm going to pass something out here. I'll make it quick, sorry. I'm asking that you consider not confirming Chief Cantrell and Sergeant Arvis Notanat. I'm asking you make the hard right choice over the easy wrong. This is a subjective versus objective issue. I want you to objectively look at whether or not they should be confirmed. Police officers place their lives in harm's way to serve and protect the public. We all owe them a debt of gratitude. They should be celebrated and honored. They selflessly work long hours, late nights, long weekends. Their families are also owed a debt of gratitude for sharing their loved ones with us, the community, and worrying every day as their fathers, sons, mothers, daughters go to work and potentially face dangerous and deadly situations every day. Everything I just said is beyond contestation, and no one's denying those facts. That being said, it's also important to remember that society has granted police with very specific powers. These powers need to be respected and never abused. To arrest, cite, and basically make the decision to suspend or revoke rights of freedom can be, result in personal freedoms being suspended and result in citizens being placed in jail, separated from their families, and harm reputations. Those powers that we authorize police to exercise mandate that they are one hundred percent truthful and honest. They cannot be abused. Because of the powers we grant them, they must be beyond reproach. This is not a subjective thing, this is objectivity that needs to be looked at here. Uncorruptible they must be. They must exercise the highest of moral and ethical standards, most new, and thank you for that. They must live a more honest and integrity-driven life. We should uphold them to higher standards because of the powers they're granted. Never give them a pass when they violate this trust. When they abuse the powers we've granted them, when they allow themselves to fall victim to being used potentially as a political weapon, consequences are mandated. You cannot foster or condone a culture of corruption. As elected officials, unfortunately at times, you may have to make really hard decisions that possibly will come at a cost. Some decisions, the right, honest, and integrity-driven decisions are a lot harder than the easy wrong decisions. Undoing a bad decision to right a wrong sometimes is not cheap, easy, or popular. But if it is the right moral and ethical decision, should you make it? Yes, I think you should. I think you as a council are up to that task, and I, and I think you can weather that storm. I think if the old council made terrible decisions, you were strong enough, moral enough, to have enough integrity to not allow it to continue. You will fix it and right that wrong. I'm going to go into the detail of the chain of events here. December twenty second, two thousand twenty-three, at seven forty-five hours, Jessica Hill filed a complaint alleging Jennifer Thompson falsified a document. In the arrest affidavit, a sworn document that's upholding and enforceable by her jury, it was stated that the agenda was posted ten hours after her interview. She also referred to things that happened on Facebook that didn't happen until the weekend. It's impossible for her to be interviewed for stuff that hadn't happened yet. She's, emails were provided and all were sent out after the interview occurred. The interview at seven forty-five had not been sent yet. The, the emails were sent at ten thirty-seven, seventeen twenty-two, seventeen forty-five, on the same day. They can't be sent after she was interviewed. This is either gross incompetence, or it's criminal. It's one of the two, nothing more. It could be either one. But here's the deal. Jen Thompson was also never interviewed. You always interview the subject of the, of the investigation at the end. She was never afforded that opportunity. I've provided extensive documentation that questions the integrity of the affidavit and our competency of Sergeant Arvis Notanat up to criminal investigation. Are they incompetent? Are they criminal? April fourth, the former mayor stated that a week prior to that, they were both promoted. They are technically still on probation, per your city ordinance. They're still on, on probation for six months. They haven't been confirmed yet, they haven't had a commission yet. You can undo this. Please, however you decide to do it, objectively look at it, remove the subjective, subjectiveness out of this. You worry about liabilities, if you cosign this stuff, you're pending litigation, you have to factor in how that's going to play out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Can I speak? Can I speak? Well, you can speak on the, on the agenda, because Mr. Cooper just got to.
I waived my earlier time, Hammond, when it was open twenty.
You had to sign up.
I did. I'd signed up and I waited, I waited me to speak in the beginning, and I asked permission to speak at the time of. I didn't ask for extra time at both events.
I didn't use my five minutes. May I stand? Do you want my second?
Yes, does she have a speaker present? Is that a big question? Or did she speak before?
Yes, she's going to be.
So typically the way this is run, I mean, you, you speak during public comment section? Or you can, with all your comments, the actual item is only going to be, y'all, as a legislative body, you want to open it up? If everyone else is speaking, we get the guidance, it's within your discretion. Otherwise, you receive the cards, you receive the comments, so you can decide.
Okay, can we get our advice? I personally would like to hear everybody out. We really want to speak, we said we're there.
Well, I get more time too, then, if we're letting other people speak.
If we not do this at the beginning, then it means whenever we have a place on up, we spoke, forehand.
Right, the council just said we had an option to hear anyone, so if you would like to speak, too, you're welcome. I mean, I would just, that's just, it's upon the market.
So, so just, uh, just, to be specific here, right now, the agenda item is six F. Right? So my understanding, Mr. Cooper was speaking on six F.
So it would have to be on six F.
When you, that's, that's right. So you're going to open up public comment for the next item. Arguably, you'd be able to speak in, just like everyone else, on the next item. So right now, you're not considering both items at once, you're just considering one. But I think that's the question, is do you want to open up or public comment for six F?
That's okay. I won't speak. I'd like to ask your opinions in favor of our permitting of Orvino and Kanserle stand up right now.
At this time, for students with Texas Open Meetings, Act Chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, Section five five one, Act seven four, for the government city council. The government city council will convene in Texas Executive Session to discuss these matters unless the employee decides to discuss officially. Hold this item in the meeting forum, please, for item F and G.
I think your question is, for this, you have to call it the one item, right?
Both the one and the two.
Okay, so you're asking, do they want to have it in public or?
The question is, do they want to?
Right now. Sorry, I'm not saying.
Yes, thank you. You want to have a public address?
Yes, twenty thirty-six, two zero, three six, we will now close the open forum, go into executive session.
So just for the, just so you know, we're on the Texas.
Just today.